And. Sorry Jane, I'm just waiting for MCTV.
That's okay, just let us know when you're set Tina. Has Laurie Lee joined us? Could you tell me?
Nope, not yet.
And I think Wendy was waiting too, so.
Yeah Wendy should. Alright, and you can begin Jane, thank you.
Okay, and I see you Jacqueline, hi, good evening. Okay, evening everyone, we already started meeting in open session before going into executive session. Now we're reconvening in open session. Former Governor Baker's. In the meeting law, Mass General Law. The public will now be allowed physically access to school committee. The meeting via Montague Community Town Broadcast. The emergency open meeting law has been signed into law as chapter 20, section 20 of the Acts of 2021. The school committee reserve the right to implement additional remote participation procedures. Will notify the public of procedures as it is practical to. The option for public bodies to hold meetings remotely until March 31st, 2025. Has been signed into law by Governor Healy, chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. Any members of the public who to join the meeting may do so by accessing the link on the GMRS website. Committee notices and just for upcoming meetings and the date will be tonight's committee meeting. We are currently live streaming as well as broadcasting on MCTV. And a recording of the meeting will be available on MCTV and the display at the conclusion of meeting. You are in this audience rather than a participant in the meeting, please just remember your camera off, that will be very helpful. We welcome all visitors. See if we have anyone. Wanted to participate in public participation tonight, I think I see Wendy's hand though.
Your audio is very, very choppy, I'm getting about every other word.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Turn my picture off because it was okay during exactly.
It may be one of those things that you might need to take your off when you.
Thank you.
Like they speak, thank you.
Yes. I can't seem to shut up.
Jane, let me shut it down for you. Okay.
Yes, would you please? This one doesn't have us, okay, it is, it should be now, okay, thank you so much. And thanks for letting me know Wendy because it was okay previously, I don't know what.
It is better now.
But anyway.
It's very clear.
Okay, yeah, it may be the, the storm because this is a different machine, we're hoping it would work better. So we've not had any requests for public participation, so we'll move along to upcoming in school committee attendance at events, Brian?
So tomorrow is scheduled as an early release day for professional development. There's no school on Monday, January 15th in recognition of Martin Luther King Day. The Turner's Falls High School Band is playing at the Springfield Thunderbirds game on that day at 3pm and I'll give a little bit of information about that in my report. Friends of Hillcrest is hosting a Coco and Crafts event on Thursday, January 18th at 5pm. And there's no school for turnaround day on Friday, January 19th.
Does anyone else have any information about other events they've attended or they might know about that are upcoming? Okay, thank you. Do we have a student report this evening, Sina?
Hi, alright, hi Sina, hi. I don't have attendance week, we didn't have a student council meeting because we had a smaller one with just the E board to talk about. The spring conference in Hyannis, it's like a three day, I think a two night overnight trip. In like Cape Cod area where it's like a leadership conference with lots of other student council members from Massachusetts. So it's really exciting, we only have a limited number of seats, so we've been trying to work out as an E board who is going to attend. But that's kind of been our main big thing from the student council. Other things going around in the school though, we have Chicago rehearsals underway, they're going amazing, I'm getting really looking forward to the show, I think it's gonna be. Just fabulous. We have a student who is running a new community service project, they're gonna be building bird boxes to put up in the spring when the ground thaws. And so they're gonna be meeting, I believe, on Friday in the wood shop to start working on those, that's really exciting, I know it's drawing in like a different kind of crowd than we usually have for community service, that's really cool. And I'm looking forward to seeing how they turn out. Um, in addition, let's see. The end of the semester is coming up, so we have like finals for some classes, things like that, things are wrapping up, people are getting antsy, but. It's people are also looking forward to new classes when things switch around. Um, one thing I wanted to mention real quick is that, let's see what day is it Tuesday, so yeah, yesterday, when we had the whole snowstorm situation. Um, the parking lots and sidewalks around the school were just not very well taken care of. I'm not trying to like throw any blame on anybody, but it's like a parking lot full of 17 year olds driving around is already dangerous enough. And so I think there was a ton of ice in the parking lot is what I heard from some of my peers, some of the spots were just not really cleared out, just a ton of ice, it was kind of. Dangerous and that happens a lot, I've noticed around the sidewalks as well, we have to walk very carefully because it's just covered in ice. So just something to be mindful of because I know we don't want anyone getting hurt. But yeah, people are liking the snow, I think it's a nice change, finally feel like winter, but that's all I got today, so thank you very much.
Thank you Sina.
Is the spring conference for the school committee members in March?
I'm sorry, you're breaking out a little bit, what was that?
Let me do this again. Is the spring conference for the school committee members in Hyannis during the month of March, I think?
Um, I think yeah, it is, it's an early March, let me pull up my calendar, I think it is. The sixth through the eighth or it's the seventh through the ninth, I'm not sure, but it's.
Okay.
Pretty exciting and we have a lot of time to be looking forward to it because we haven't been able to go the past few years due to COVID and other circumstances. And we're also hosting, we also have a separate spring conference, it's like a one day thing where schools go meet up, I think I talked about the fall conference we had earlier this year. But we're actually hosting the spring conference this year at Turner's Falls High School, so that's really exciting and that's gonna be a big project for our student council to take care of.
Oh, that will be great, thank you. Okay, superintendent's report, Brian?
So I just have a few small items, pieces of information in here first. Came this morning, Gil Principal Walter Houston received a very pleasant phone call from the mobile station at the intersection of Route 2. And Main Road in Gil, known as the Mill. And they had informed him that Gil Elementary had been awarded a $500 grant from the Exxon Mobil Company. To use for math and science activities, it turns out the store had entered. The name of Gil, entered Gil Elementary School in what was a drawing and Gil Elementary School ended up being chosen. The organization is coming to Gil on Monday, January 2nd at 1pm to present the check to the school. And I'm requesting at this time that the school committee vote to accept this donation on behalf of Gil Elementary School.
Okay, thank you, I will entertain a motion to accept the $500 grant from the Mobile Exxon Company. To the Gil Elementary School to be used for math and science.
I'll move it.
Okay, I think I heard Cliff and Bill.
Yep.
Any discussion? Okay, in that case, we'll take a roll call to approve it, Bill?
Uh, yes.
John? Christina? Wendy? Cliff? Cliff? Cliff, can you hear me?
Sorry, I heard that kind of.
Okay, yes, yep, and myself, yes, thank you, that's wonderful.
Thank you. As I mentioned, the Turner's Falls High School Band is playing God Bless America and the Star Spangled Banner as the official musical group for. The Springfield Thunderbirds at their game on Monday at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. Please consider joining the music department, they are offering a fan bus, permission slips are available at the high school office for students and must be turned in before Jan- before January 12th. Seats on the bus are $10 and the price is reduced for families who have multiple tickets. If you're interested in getting tickets to the game and whether going on the fan bus or not. There's a link on the music department's social media sites and on posters posted up around the school. And it would be best to buy the tickets through there, if for some reason you are unable to pay the bus fee, please contact Ms. Camo. I did also want to make, in particular for new committee members, that their MASC is holding a number of charting the course orientation offerings where they used to do them more out east, they have moved them around to be regional. And there is a regional, one in Western Mass that's gonna be in Chicopee on Saturday, March 9th. It's a full day seminar and some of the topics covered include school finance, open meeting law, public records law, conflict of interest, special education, collective bargaining. School leadership standards and evaluations and school committee roles and responsibilities. If any of you might be interested in attending that on Saturday, March 9th, please let Tara and I know as soon as possible, you could simply send us an email. And we'll reach out to MASC and try to reserve a spot. The statement of interest process with the Massachusetts School Building Authority has been released. The statement of interest closing dates or closing date for districts submitting. For consideration for the accelerated repair program, which involves full. Or partial replacement of roofs and or windows in an otherwise structurally sound facility is Friday, March 1st. Our submission to this program would be to replace the roof at Gil Elementary School. And the statement of interest closing date for submitting consideration under the core program, which is primarily for projects. Excuse me, considered as extensive repairs renovations or additions is Friday, April 12th and our submission would again be for the replacement of Hillcrest Elementary School. And so our team will begin the process of taking a look at what the differences are in the new statement of interest format and. Submitting statement of interest for both of those projects and that's it for my report for this meeting.
Thank you, Brian, anyone have any questions or comments for Brian on his report? Okay, next up, we have business and operations report, Joanne?
I will just be talking about the budget later in the business section.
Okay, I thought so, but I just wanted to double check. Okay, moving on to school committee reports, we have the warrants to be approved, if it's acceptable, I would ask that we can vote. To approve the four warrants altogether. The first is fiscal year 24, it is an accounts payable warrant, the ACH designation simply designates how they are paid. Online as opposed to another system. And that's dated 110, 2024 in the amount of $41,754.72. The second is a fiscal year 24 warrant, also accounts payable, number 3439, same date for $300,754.40. The third is a fiscal year 24 high school student activity account warrant, number of that is 3440, same date as the others, 110. For the amount of $6,064.14. And the last is a fiscal year 24 middle school student activity account, the warrant number is 3441, dated 110 as well. In the amount of $245.30, I'll entertain a motion to approve those warrants.
I'll move it, Bill.
Thank you, Bill.
I'll second it.
Heather, second it, okay, any discussion before we vote on that? Again, for anyone who wants to see the details of all of the warrants, they are included in the packet, all the details are there. Okay, we'll take a roll call vote for that, Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Cliff?
He means you.
Yes, I saw, yes, Cliff, thank you, and myself, yes, thank you. The next item on school committee reports is from the policy subcommittee, this is the third reading of the listed. Policies and I'll just quickly review what they are about and what has been changed about them and Heather. Bill, if I miss anything, please let me know. The first policy is BBBA slash BBBB. It's amended, it's pretty much in its original form, it requires, it tells what the requirements are to be a school committee member. And about taking the oath of office, I think the small change in it is that the municipal or district clerk. Has to give the new member. An assigned receipt for a copy of the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law governing the conduct of committee meetings in general and executive sessions in particular. The rest is pretty much standard, we just updated it that little bit. The next policy is BBBE. It's about unexpired term fulfillments on the school committee, when a vacancy occurs, how it's filled. This, we've simply made it a bit shorter and a fair amount clearer, the policy that we had was not as typical as most. Of them of other districts and it was a bit cumbersome in the language. It covers letters of interest being sent, names being submitted. In nomination and then voting and we also added if there's more than one vacancy, the first vote will be intended to fill the first vacancy and any additional vacancies will be filled by subsequent votes. From the remaining candidates, that was something that wasn't in the original one. The third policy is AA1. It deals with regional school district legal status, it's a bit shorter and clearer and also refers to our. Regional school agreement, which is standard. The next is CHA slash CHC. It's development and dissemination of procedures. That is again, just a more concise explanation, it's very similar to the original. In the sense that it explains a superintendent is responsible for specifying actions and designing the arrangements under which the school district will be operated. In accordance with school committee policies, so that's the development and dissemination of procedures rather than policies. The next one is JICK. It's been added as a part of a review of the harassment policy, it's called harassment of students. It's again, very similar to the one we had, but it's always good to review it and make sure the wording is updated, we always refer to the Mass Association of School Committees versions because they update theirs. And check the legality of wording for us and the basic change there is the explanation. That race includes traits historically associated with race, including but not limited to hair texture, hair type, hair length, protective hairstyles, that's something that's been added in general to that. In districts as well. And that covers the. Group of policies to be approved this evening, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So much.
Heather, thank you. Second?
Second.
Wendy, thank you very much, any discussion of those policies? Okay, in that case, we'll take a roll call vote to approve the group of policies, Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Cliff? And myself, yes, thank you. And we'll move on to the business section of the meeting, I believe. A is a presentation on proposed student field trips. I think we have Megan Bendixson joining us, hi Megan.
Hi. Brian, did you, did you want to introduce me at all or should I just go for it?
No, you can go for it, I, I will remind the committee that Megan and. Her, her planning partner Jessica Vacula Curtis had successfully taken a trip to Europe and they wanted to make the committee. Aware of a planned future trip. So that they can begin the process of pulling together student interests, so Megan, thank you for joining us today.
Absolutely, as many of you probably remember or know, we went in March to both Paris and Rome. And because I'm the French and Latin teacher, I took both my French students and my Latin students and we did one big trip. Over eight days and it was amazing and we had an amazing time, it was my first time leaving, leading a trip. And we learned a lot and I learned kind of what I didn't want to do again and so what I would like to do now is to split the trips into two separate trips. Because I found that there was a lot of opportunity for my French students, for example, to be speaking French, but. When we were kind of like mixed group with Latin and French, you know, it was harder to hold them accountable for that and I also found that. I really wanted to dig into the Latin and Roman culture with my Latin students in Rome and we did all of that, but I think it could be. Much richer if we could divide the trips and also we lost a day of travel in between and that was just kind of a bummer because you know, we wanted to be doing things and staying in one place and. Students kept saying, I wish I could stay in Paris longer, I wish we had more time in Rome, so. We decided or I kind of decided that I wanted to split them, so the goal is to go to Rome with Latin students and to go to Paris with French students. So that obviously means. Smaller groups, which is also one of the things I wanted to prioritize in the future, we had a really large group and it was great. But it was a lot to keep track of and a lot of people to wrangle and so I am looking forward to hopefully having some smaller groups. And being able to really maximize the time that we have in those places, so. I surveyed my students to see which group could go sooner, basically, the Latin students or the French students. And it turns out that Latin students are more able to go sooner this next school year, so March of 25. And then French students on the whole, there's just a younger crowd and so we can wait a year and then go with them a year after, so. I did, I did try to consider as many people as possible and I decided what years we were gonna go to which places. And so we've been trying to generate some student interest and the Rome trip is obviously the one that we're most. Planning for and working right now because it is a little over a year away and it feels exciting to be back in that planning process and it feels a little bit. Not easier, but it feels like we've done it before, we kind of know now kind of like what to expect. And we are probably gonna do some of the same fundraisers that we've done in the past and. Yeah, so we're, I want, we wanted to let you all know that that's what's happening and obviously we don't have the, you know, exact hotels and flights to show you now and to officially. You know, bring to you, but we wanted to be on the, you know, we want to be transparent about what we're planning and let, have you be aware and. Give you a chance to think about it and ask me questions right now if you have them.
Thank you, Megan, does anyone have any questions for Megan at this point, I know we'll be seeing you again when it gets closer with specifics, but people might. Have questions or comments at this point?
I have one and that's. That's about attaining your smaller groups, do you think that by? Do you think that's accomplished simply by looking at your course participants? In other words, the French, people in the French class is a smaller group or are you thinking that? Some people in the class may not go or people outside of the class might be able to come, what is the whole concept?
Uh, so the whole concept is that this is a language specific trip and because it's, it's a lot of work for me, I'm doing it for the students that I actively teach. And have connections with, so, so yeah, I'm, it's open to students who are taking either French or Latin and. Ideally who have taken multiple levels, but at this point, we're like, it's at this point, if you've taken level one and passed it, you know, that, that is kind of the, the basic. Minimum requirement and so not everyone in the class wants to even go and not everyone is planning on coming, but. But yeah, a good, a good section of each class is excited about coming and is interested in pursuing that, so. So yeah, it is not open to just anyone because as like I said, it's, it's a big amount of risk from, not a risk, but it's, it's something for me, right, to put my, to brick, put myself out there and bring these students with me and I really want to know them well and I want to trust them and I want to feel like we have a relationship. Before we set foot in a foreign country for a week together, so that's the rationale behind that.
No, that's, I appreciate that, I understand, thank you.
Thank you Megan, anyone else, Christina?
Quickly, could you just talk about the funding plan for this? I know we talked about it last year, but I, and I know students are fundraising, you mentioned that, but could you just kind of? Go over that again, how much of it is typically fundraised by student groups, how much do students contribute themselves, does any of it come from the school budget?
It would be nice if some of it did, um, I, we, as far as I can recall, did not receive any money from the budget last year. We did form a, a travel club, which we got, you know, officially official so that when we did fundraisers, we could use that as like our student activity account. We ended up doing a couple fundraisers, the problem, I mean, the reality is that like this, this trip is not cheap and so we, again, we're trying to plan as far out in advance so people have time to save. But we ended up being able to cover the exorbitant cost of a coach bus, which we had to take from here to Logan and then from Logan and back. As well as we bought chargers for like European plug kind of converters for everyone and we ended up paying. A few other things like that we were able to provide for students, but on the whole, our fundraising, which was significant, was. Really kind of covered the things that like we needed as a group and there was one day where I had some money left over, so I think we, we gave, we provided students like lunch on that day. So the fundraising that we did ended up being for group kind of costs. We wanted it to be more than that and to have more to be able to give to students who had greater need, but in the end, with the time that we had and the resources that we had, that was all the fundraising was able to cover.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you Megan, we'll look forward to seeing you closer to the date.
Absolutely.
And Megan.
Have a good night.
Megan, thank you very much, I just wanted to, just as a note and a reminder, and if you could pass this on to Jess as well, that. that, um, school committee and I will need to approve the trip before fundraising can begin formally. Okay?
Okay.
So, um, I know that will push a, a tight timeline between getting things going, but certainly coming proactively to inform the committee as you've requested is very helpful. Um, and if you need any assistance with sort of pulling that stuff together, we're more than happy to help. Okay?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next we have addressing issues of equity. So I believe Jean Powers is joining us. Hi, Jean.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I just need to share my screen. Tina, I think I need to be able to share.
Sorry. Give it another try. No, it's not fast.
There we go. I'm quick. All right. So I have a very brief, um, presentation today about issues of equity. And it is really highlighting the launch of our district-wide book study. So, um, this is something that I have been kind of running over the past few years that I've been here. I know there's been book studies in the past, but every January we do a book study and it's been really wonderful and it continues to grow. Um, we're up to 30 participants this year, which is amazing. But this year we chose the book, um, Trauma Responsive Educational Practices. And this comes out of the work from the Culturally Responsive Leadership Team that we've, I've talked a little bit about and which we focused on trauma responsive, um, and trauma-informed practices in the district. And so this is an optional book study. And, um, what you see on the page is a little blurb about the book and really thinking about how trauma impacts students. Um, how, you know, there's a larger percentage of students that are, you know, in, in ethnical, ethnically or racially marginalized or low income that experience more trauma than others. And so this book, um, I previewed the book in the fall and I really liked it because it was really, um, really useful. So sometimes you read things and it's very theoretical. This is very practical, practical. And I'm excited that it'll really look at a lens of trauma through equity as well. So, um, as I said, we have 30 participants from paraprofessional support staffs, teachers, administrators, counselors. Um, we have some of our interns, um, from the high school taking part. So it's a real good diverse group. And, um, just a huge thank you to all the, um, faculty and administrators who are leading these book clubs. So we have six different groups. They start the week of the 22nd of January, um, and they meet five times. And teachers can earn professional development points, um, to help with their relicensure or to lead towards salary advancement credit. So I'm super excited. And after every book study, we do a feedback and I love to come back and share how teachers and staff are implementing what they're learning from their time reading as well as discussing with their, their colleagues. So that's my exciting news for tonight. If anyone has any questions.
Any questions for Jean? We will look forward to hearing about, uh, the book study as it progresses. I think that'll be great.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Um, next we have a preliminary fiscal year 25 budget presentation and discussion. This is not a vote this evening, but it certainly is a discussion. So Joanne is going to present that for us.
Share my screen? Whoops. Whoops. Yeah. Not sure what I'm sharing here. Can you see that now?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah. I, I may have to have somebody else share the screen because my computer seems to be flipping through pages. So, um, this is our, yeah, Brian, I may need to have you share your screen instead.
It makes for a nice quick look.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be quick. We'll do our best.
Joanne, you'll have to send this version to me.
Okay, well, it's, it's shared on the website on the agenda.
Okay, I'll pull it up there.
See, I'm trying something else here with this. Okay, let me try this and see what happens.
Okay.
All right, so this is our preliminary proposed budget. And the issue with the timing of putting our budget out there is that we don't have state revenue yet. So we don't know what the state revenue is going to look like. We will have that within the next couple of weeks. But for now, this is what we are proposing based on our estimate of what we think our state aid will look like. So we're going to go through the budget process and schedule our curriculum and instruction and assessments, enrollment, budget needs, revenues, expenses and capital. And then we'll open it up for questions. So this is where we are in the budget schedule at this time. In two weeks, we'll get together for a working committee, but school committee meeting where we'll review the line item budgets and we'll have some discussions there. By that time, this budget may have changed because we will know what our revenues are. And so we will continue to adjust this budget until you meet on the 23rd. And hopefully that is the budget you will vote at your preliminary vote on January 30th. We will meet with the Montague and Gill Select Boards and Finance Committees at some point. I'm not sure exactly the date of that yet. I'm not sure if they've nailed it down. And then in February, we'll have a public hearing, February 13th. And on February 27th, we'll continue to discuss the budget before we vote it for the final vote on March 12th. And then the town meetings are typically the first Monday and the first Saturday of May, and that's when the towns will approve it. And the budget would go into effect on July 1st. So our enrollment within the district, so the students that go to our schools is relatively stable. It's increasing a little bit. But we have seen a decline in our choice out and our charter out enrollment. So that's really good news because those numbers, and you'll see it later in the budget, that those numbers haven't been this low in the past 10 years. Our fiscal 25 budget increase rate now is about a 2.5% increase. We have greater dependence on school choice, revolving and E and D. And that is primarily because of the loss of the ESER funding. So what we did is we tried to use other funds to offset the loss of ESER. So we did not have to eliminate any positions in this version of the budget. You know, once the state revenue comes out, we'll see what happens. But right now we have no reductions of positions. This budget is also based on Montague's Affordable Assessment. And we've been working with Montague and their Affordable Assessment since 2010. The Student Opportunity Act is a way that the state has been adjusting the foundation budget. And the foundation budget is what we use or what they use to calculate what state aid will be for all districts throughout the state. So that's the chapter 70 funding, which is a, a good sized piece of our revenues. As I said, the stimulus funds ESER III will end in September of 2024. So we will be using the final amounts in our allocation to run our summer programming and make some final purchases before the end of September. But all positions previously included in ESER have been folded into other funds. And that allowed us to continue with our pandemic-related positions that we had added for academic and social, emotional and staffing needs. Okay, Brian's going to chat about some of these.
Yeah, and so here are, um, people's, people's information about who's serving and in what capacity and contact information for my office in case people have questions. But one of the things that's been incredibly helpful in turning around, uh, charter and choice in and out of the district um, and seeing those numbers move in that particular direction has been, um, the positive involvement of families in our schools and our communities. We, we see a, a really significant amount and increasing amount of, uh, fa- families attending and supporting school events. Um, and we hope that people will continue to do that. Uh, but also groups like Positively Gil Montague and other organizations out there have really done a nice job of, uh, continuing to promote the good things that are going on here in the district. But beyond that, being able to get involved in your student schools, uh, joining PTOs and school councils, attending school committee meetings. We do have an open seat in Montague. So joining school committee, these are all ways that you can get, uh, greater influence and access to information about the budget development process. And then as a district, we, we follow, you know, a, a fairly standard process. Um, with the department, uh, each department and each school looks at its, um, needs, uh, taking a look at current student data as well as recommendations that they might receive from, from families or, uh, from enrollment data. We also look at data provided by the state and, uh, researched-based, uh, needs of research-based curricula and materials to be able to best deliver instruction and, and provide support for students. The admin team, uh, reviews but the budget requests. And we seek to build a budget that will provide students with the best possible learning experiences, given the resources that we have available. And then, uh, we engage in a, uh, in a process in managing the budget to make sure that we're managing it responsibly and trying to maximize the efficiency of the resources that we have. You got to go in the other direction. Have you lost it again? And so, Joanne, if you want to go on to the next slide, slide number nine. So this is the third year of our three-year plan. And, um, one of the things that you'll note in the next two slides or in this slide and subsequent slide is that we're developing a budget that's going to sit in the first year of a new three-year action plan. However, the budget development process still really is guided by the impact that the pandemic had on us. And so it is really logical to develop the budget, um, with these goals in mind. And the long-term goals are to, uh, improve family engagement, improve student engagement, enhance growth and achievement of students with an eye toward accelerating that growth, um, ensuring that all students are receiving great appropriate instruction with appropriate scaffolding to make sure that they can access and a heavy emphasis on inclusion and equity. Um, as I had mentioned, that our current three-year goals end in June of 2024. And in through the spring of this school year, we'll be gathering information from the community to pull together, um, along with, uh, reviews of, of student achievement, growth and, and social, emotional data to determine a, a long-term plan that will be put together by our administrative team over the summer and brought to school committee for approval in late August or early September, uh, for the development of a new long-term, um, strategic plan.
So I'm going to highlight, um, some of the things that are currently happening in the district related to curriculum instruction assessment, grants and different initiatives. So as you can see on this slide, we're in our third and final year of the Social Emotional Learning and Mental Health Grant. Um, we're really been focusing on the goals that were established a couple of springs ago by a consultant looking at how we build, um, capacity in the district for these components. We're in year two of the Culturally Responsive Practices Leadership Academy. It's a three-year program. Um, and we've been looking at how we define culturally responsive practices in the district. We're in the second year of the Multicured Systems of Support Math Recovery Academy. Um, this has allowed our math interventionists and many teachers to engage in math recovery, um, courses. We have, um, signed up to be part of a cohort that identifies, um, ways to improve chronic absenteeism. Um, I believe we've shared previously, the administrative team has created a professional learning community around that this year. And there's a transition to a new IEP starting in Massachusetts officially next year. And so we are part of a grant team that has been, um, sending out some of our folks to kind of get trained and then come back and train the rest of the staff on what the new IEP looks like and how it really looks at transitions and connection between parents, caregivers and classroom teachers. So this is just a highlight of some of the components at the secondary school. We're screens for social, emotional and skill-based and put students in skill-based groups as needed. This is a, uh, adjustment and guidance counselor kind of tier two intervention. We've been looking at common writing assessment throughout the, the different curriculum. We've really increased arts and music and the program, both programs have really grown. Uh, we've done some newer updates to our pool and the theater has been getting some updates as well. And we continue to offer no-fee athletics. At the high school, we have a makerspace. Um, we've been continuing to provide dual enrollment courses through GCC for students. Uh, we continue with advanced placement courses. We have import person courses as well as taking advantage of a grant from the state to provide AP math and science courses virtually through virtual high school. We have continued to assess ninth and 10th graders with I-Ready Diagnostics and Math and ELA. This year we started our third Innovation Career Pathways. You can see we have healthcare, social assistance, manufacturing, and we've added environmental and life sciences. Um, we have an advisory period that allows also, it's called GAP, Guided Academic Progress, where students to get additional support and many leadership opportunities, um, and as such as student council. Middle school, Great Falls Middle School also has a student council. We've been looking to build in, um, some intervention within reading and math and building more, um, art and science STEM courses. The middle school continues to use the I-Ready Math and ELA Intervention Program um, and is uses developmental designs approach and is a team model approach, so sixth, seventh, eighth. Next is our elementary schools. So we've updated our curriculum over the past few years where we have, um, evidence-based academic curriculum and ELA math and science. We continue to increase access to sensory pathways and engagement, um, among the different components or areas of the school. We have math and literacy plans that have an aligned assessment calendar. And we've really shifted our literacy instruction to align with the science of reading. We have, we continue to have math and reading interventionist and our STEM students attend a weekly STEM special where they get an additional, uh, amount of science. And this year is the first year of implementing our Second Steps SEL curriculum. We continue to be a responsive classroom, um, district with an in-house responsive classroom coach. We continue to build on tier one and tier two supports. And, uh, we have pairs in all of our kindergarten and first grade classrooms and really helps reduce the student to, um, future ratio and support students after the pandemic. And then kind of just an overview, some of the things I've already talked about. But this first one, really looking at providing supports and scaffolds. This relates to our current district long-term goals. And I imagine even with new goals, this is going to be something we continue to build on. We have an implementation of our new SEL curriculum. We're looking at secondary curriculum and right, really looking at what may be a little outdated and how we can review and refine. And then, uh, we recently adopted the new English as a Second Language Curriculum that teachers have been rolling out. We're looking at differentiation, trying to support specific needs for students and adjusting practice based on data. So looking at data a couple of times a year as, as a whole grade level team and making changes and shifting practice, but also really adding, kind of looking at data as something we do regularly. And then assessment, I've talked about our I-Ready Diagnostics, both in math and reading. We've added a DIBLs assessment in reading for K to three. Looking at writing at secondary and we continue to follow our math and literacy plans and assessment calendar. Okay, thanks.
Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about enrollment. So So there are different ways to look at our enrollment. So foundation enrollment is the number of students that live in our towns that go to public schools, be it a charter school or school choice out or art school. District enrollment looks at the enrollment of students that are in our schools, no matter where they live. They might come through tuition from Irving or through school choice to us, or they live in Gail or Montague. And then at the bottom, you can see our choice in and our choice out and our charter numbers. And those are all improving. They're all going in the right direction. And I have a picture here of our school choice enrollment trends. So you can see the hundred and fifty-four students that are choice out right now is a hundred students less than what we had choice out in fiscal nineteen. And it is the lowest that our choice out enrollment has been for these ten years and for years before that as well. So it really is trending in the right direction. So our, as I said, the in-district enrollment is the students who attend school in our buildings. Students that are not included in foundation enrollment are homeschooled students or private school students. So our foundation enrollment is what leads to our revenue. That's how we get our state aid, based on the students that live in our towns. So for fiscal twenty-five, we had to estimate our chapter seventy assumptions for now because that number will not be released until the middle to the end of January. So based on information that we know, our foundation budget rates are expected to continue to phase in through that Student Opportunity Act. And then, and that'll continue to happen through fiscal twenty-seven. I'm just gonna admit somebody here. So this would increase a larger percentage of the rates for guidance and psychological services, for special education, English learners and for low-income students. Those are the areas of the foundation budget that the state felt needed to be increased more. Over the past couple of years, the inflation rate was capped at four and a half percent. This year, it's anticipated that that number will be lower. It won't hit the cap of four point five percent. It could be closer to half of that, but we will wait and see where that number lands. So while our foundation enrollment is relatively flat, it may have increased a little bit based on the changes in the Student Opportunity Act and our sorry, based on the changes in the Student Opportunity Act, we do anticipate our chapter seventy will increase because the foundation budget will increase in spite of level foundation enrollment. At this point, the low-income poverty level for Gilmonigu students has been over sixty percent for the past couple of years. And so we expect that will be the same going forward. Okay, so this sort of lays out how that chapter seventy formula works. And I think I will wait to talk about this until the next meeting where we actually have the actual chapter seventy. But it basically takes the foundation enrollment. It, the state calculates what the required minimum contribution is for each and every city and town. And then the difference is our chapter seventy. So in some years, we've been held harmless because when they did that calculation, our chapter seventy would have been less than it was in the year before. And they don't allow it to be less. And so when it, the calculation shows that you could get less money, they hold you harmless and they give you the same amount. So we can see that happened in fiscal twenty-four. So we had less students than fiscal twenty-three. And in for those years, when you look in that ru- that enrollment, the enrollment's from the prior year. So in fiscal twenty-three, in October of twenty-two, we had nine hundred and forty-seven students. And so when they build the fiscal twenty-four budget, they use that because that's the last October one enrollment we have. So right now, they would use the October of twenty-three enrollment to build our budget. So I'm assuming for these purposes, that we have about nine hundred and fifty students in our foundation enrollment, which is just a very slight increase over the prior year. Then I had to calculate what I believe the foundation budget to be. And so if you look at the average in row X, the average came to six point seven percent. The reason fiscal twenty-three and fiscal twenty-four are higher percentages is because of the inflation rate. So this calculation shows what the foundation budget will be per pupil. So I estimated that and then multiplied that per pupil by the nine fifty to come up with the foundation budget for the district as a whole. The district contribution, if you look at fiscal twenty-three and twenty-four again, those numbers were pretty high, six and seven percent. But in every other year on this chart, it was either a decrease, somewhere from a decrease to a two percent. So I took the average of all of those to come up with a two percent increase in our district contribution. That number's really hard to estimate. And so that's the way I did this calculation, just to have a a number to work with. When all was said and done, we took the foundation budget, subtract the district contribution. So C minus F equals G, our chapter seventy. And the difference between that chapter seventy and the prior year chapter seventy is a seven hundred and thirty thousand dollar increase. So that's how the budget was built. If in the prior year in fiscal twenty-four, you see it shows hold harmless. So we received fifty-six thousand dollars extra because we were held harmless. If you just do the math and take the foundation budget minus the district contribution to come up with your chapter seventy, you'd get a smaller number than what we had in the prior year. And like I said, they don't do that. So that's when you are held harmless. So being held harmless is great if you're having, seeing a decline in enrollment. But if you can get extra funds through chapter seventy, that's much better for our budget. So for now, we are estimating that we're getting seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars in additional chapter seventy. Now, if the district contribution rate goes up, then the the increase or the chapter seventy amount will go down and then the other way around. And remember, the foundation budget here is also an estimate. So in a couple of weeks, we'll know what these numbers really are and we'll see just how close we estimated this. So once we know what the revenues are, then we need to balance the budget. So Brian's gonna talk a little bit about our priorities.
And so as I mentioned earlier, you know, our our drivers are still those five goals, five long-term goals. And um obviously, we are still in a circumstance where um our students and our faculty and staff are are still feeling the impact of the pandemic. And so in order to really meet these objectives of of continuing to assess and respond uh to the pandemic learning loss, um both academically and in terms of uh social emotional growth, um we're looking to maintain our pandemic-related instructional and social emotional support services for students, uh particularly for those with learning differences, uh special education students, uh students who require counseling and uh students who require academic support or support for English as a second language um to identify and implement interventions for a wide range of social emotional uh goals that are aligned with our SEL mental health grant, um all of which allow us to prioritize building strong relationships with students and families and support the continued expansion of secondary programs in theater, music, fine arts. This year, adding athletics and innovation pathways programming that we're looking to still get students, continue to get students more involved in their school community, not just within the classroom with more options, but also beyond the classroom where there are so many opportunities for students to learn at our high school and middle school. Um this is, we just included this in the packet. Uh the district administrative team um made a number of recommendations for increased staffing. However, we could not consider those increases, given that our uh at this particular point in time to try to get a a balanced budget, it it was, it was very challenging to put together this proposal with the idea and priority in mind that we would, we would be seeking to maintain those positions that had been previously supported by Esser funding.
Okay, so some of the larger changes on our expenditures, I just want to go through some of those. So for health insurance, we're assuming a five percent increase based on plan enrollment in November of twenty-three. The rates for our health insurance don't come out until April after the budget is approved. And so we need to estimate this based on something. Hopefully, the five percent will be enough, but it's possible that the increases could be as high as nine percent. Insurance and fixed charges, other ones would be our town retirement. So this year, our town retirement decreased by three percent, based on our current enrollment of in October. Will contribute about twenty-eight percent of all salaries for non-mass teachers, retirement employees to the town retirement system. And then we pay teacher retirement for all teachers that are paid on federal grants. And so this number's come down a bit because the Esser grant was a federal grant. And so without the Esser grant, we do save money on the retirement that we pay in.
Yeah, I I I just have a very short question and I'm not sure whether you can answer it. And um uh why uh uh what 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 type of employees are on the town retirement uh scheme?
The employees on the town retirement are the ones that are not on teacher's retirement. So all the paras, the custodians, cafeteria, all non-certified staff.
So it's basically unit A that's so, that's on, and anybody who's not unit A, would that be roughly true?
Administrators are all on teacher's retirement as well.
Administrators, okay, okay.
Anyone with a certification.
Anyone with a certification, okay, all right, thank you.
Our other insurance increases for property liability, workers' comp, unemployment does increase about fourteen percent. And that's also an estimate. Some of those numbers don't come through to us until, you know, we're well within the year. And then the other number within the budget is our negotiable increases. So we have a line and in that line, we put money to pay for negotiable increases. And so that number has come down in fiscal twenty-five's budget because the unit A settled their contract. And so in fiscal twenty-four budget, we had two years of increases for unit A and unit C. And so in fiscal twenty-five, we have three years of increases for unit C. And then we also budgeted for our cafeteria contract, which is set to expire on June thirtieth. And then we budget for non-union positions there as well. But the number is down because a large, the unit A is a very large group. And so we don't have any money in there for them this year. Their budgets for their increases are all right in their salary lines. And you can see that on the very next line. So increased staffing and increased wages for unit A plus a decrease dependence on the Esser funds. Our instructional category increased by a million dollars. We have increases for utility costs, gas, oil, electricity, and then increases for our building, maintenance and contracted services. Couple of bigger projects that we need to look at this year would be our sprinkler and our HVAC systems at the high school and replacing the sand filter in the pool. Student services is for transportation, nurses, athletics, food service. So the bigger increases there came in transportation because we will have a new contract in fiscal twenty-five. Each of the other years during a, the term of our five-year contract for transportation will be smaller increases as we move forward. But when, whenever you get a new contract like that, it is typically the larger increase. And then the nurses' salary lines increased due to the settlement of unit A. So that's a thirty thousand dollar increase. Tuition, so here's a good news one. We had a decrease in our both, both our charter out and our choice out tuitions. And so that led us to three hundred and sixty thousand dollar reduction on our expense side. That reduction is helping to fund this budget as well. So not only are we using extra uh revolving E and D accounts, we also are reducing our expenses for choice out and charter out. So overall, our budget goes up two and a half percent. Like I said, you can see the revenues on the left and the expenses on the right. And this is based on our preliminary estimated chapter seventy that is not yet released. The budget does not eliminate any staffing positions. We are rolling the cost of a lot, the lost Esser funding positions into other areas of the budget.
Uh I had just a question about the Irving um tuition. Joanne, what number are you basing that on for the number of students?
Yes, I'm estimating the number of students. And that number is coming down because we have a smaller group of students coming in at seventh grade. I don't have that report with me on how I estimated that tuition, but I can bring that to the next meeting to talk more about it.
That would be good because I I'm curious, given that we seem to be having an increase in our students in ninth grade going over to the Franklin County Tech School, which reduces the number further. So I just want to make sure that that gets accounted for so that um Gilmonigu's not cut short, you know, in the end because the numbers are less than they anticipated.
Right, yeah, we always assume a pretty significant number to go to the tech school as well, from eighth to ninth grade. That number's been coming down as well. But in, it's, it used to be about a third of the students went. Then a couple of years there, it was more like half of the eighth graders. But I think we're closer to the third that we're estimating will leave. So that's another reason. So this nine eighty that's on here, that's a lower number than what we have budgeted in fiscal twenty-four by about, I think it's over a hundred thousand dollar reduction.
Yeah, thank you, but if you can get the numbers for me next time, I'd appreciate that.
I will. Okay. So if we take a look at just the percentages of where our revenues come from, between chapter seventy and town assessments, we're looking at about eighty percent of our revenues with the other twenty percent coming from grants and revolving Irving tuition, transportation reimbursement and then uh other smaller revenue sources like E and D, Medicaid, interest and charter reimbursement. So as I had said, Montague's Affordable Assessment, this whole process of them estimating what they can afford and what they can pay for education was established in twenty-ten. And they formalized that agreement in a document called the Compact. And that- And that has been working well for both. The town of Montague and for. The district. Gill's assessments can go up or down from year to year based on hitting Montague's affordable assessment. But there's been a lot more downs than ups for the town of Gill and we'll see that in a few minutes as well. So here is historically the town assessments since fiscal nineteen. So Montague is across the top and Gill's across the bottom. When we build the budget before we know what the minimum contributions are before the state budget is released. We assume that both Gill and Montague will pay the same percentage increase. From the prior budget, so we're estimating at two point six seven percent as the increase. But if you go to the bottom on the left, you'll see that Montague's average increase over these years. Has been just under four percent. And Gill's average increase over those same years has been less than one percent. And that is really based on the enrollment decline in Gill is greater than the enrollment decline in Montague. One of the ways that we have talked about. Funding this budget is to use more school choice revolving. Funds, so in fiscal twenty four, we're projected to spend about nine hundred and ten thousand dollars. And in fiscal twenty five, we're estimating one point one million. Circuit breaker, we're able to keep one year's worth of revenue in this account. And so our revenue is coming down from fiscal twenty four to fiscal twenty five. Based on what our ending balance was last year. So. We received. Two hundred and six thousand nine hundred and three dollars in revenue in fiscal twenty four is what we're anticipating receiving. So we're building that number into fiscal twenty five. Our food service program, based on the new funding that the state has in place that everybody eats for free. We have gotten a greater amount of money for each meal served. So while most of our funding comes from the federal government. The state is subsidizing. That. Each month when we submit our reimbursements, so if you look back to some of the. Historical years there on that chart, you'll see that. The food service program ran in a deficit, which is pretty typical in many. Districts for food service to run at a deficit. But based on the amount of money we get for each and every meal now. Under this new free meals for all program. It's looking like we're going to be able to have a surplus. In. Our food service revolving fund. So we'll keep an eye on that number and. You know, we've been serving a lot of meals, some schools serve in the ninety percent range for their lunches. Another source of funding. Is our E and D, which is excess and deficiency, it's like a savings account or like a stabilization account or. Um, for the towns, so we also talked about increasing that, so we're projecting to use five hundred thousand. To support the budget in fiscal twenty five. In our projected E and D certification at the end of this school year would be. About the same as it was last year. So then we can look at. The history and the individual revenues here for projected revenue. So as we had talked about, our cha- chapter seventy state aid revenue would be increased. There's a line that goes away, the very next line that was supplemental chapter seventy. When districts are in hold harmless and so that would go away. Our interest income, we have increasing. Pretty significantly as we've changed banks and so our interest rates are higher. And we have also put some funds into CDs to earn a greater interest rate. Excess and deficiency, as we talked. About the five hundred thousand and then Irving tuition, here's the difference. That you can see the fiscal twenty four, our tuition is estimated to be one. Million one hundred and thirty eight thousand and in fiscal twenty five. We're estimating at nine hundred and eighty thousand, so it's a hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars lower. Based on our estimated enrollments for Irving students.
Thank you.
Our charter reimbursement number is going down. But that's not always bad news because when the charter reimbursement number goes down, it means that the charter expense is also going down. And then our transportation reimbursement in fiscal twenty five is based on our fiscal twenty four expenses. And so. That number has come up. A little bit when the state increased. They had, they had typically given about seventy five percent reimbursement. And this most recent year was closer to ninety percent, so we are estimating in that same range here. The operating assessments. Are based on Montague's affordable assessment and then the debt assessment is for the high school building. And that is just a couple of years from the end. Of the payments. And then at the bottom, you can see our revolving accounts and. So grants and revolving, that's going up about a hundred and ninety two thousand. Transportation revolving is going up a hundred thousand, we talked about that change at a previous meeting. Our S R funds are going down by eight hundred thousand. We'll just have the two hundred and ten thousand remaining that we'll spend for the summer program. And into the month of September for some supplies. Circuit breaker revolving goes down simply because of the amount of revenue we received there last year. And then our school choice revolving is going up. By just under two hundred thousand. Okay, here's the student opportunity act. So in fiscal twenty. Is when the student opportunity act really kicked in. And it was the year that this, the district received extra chapter seventy. Above the hold harmless levels in many years, I, I'm not even sure how many years it had been. Since we had received any significant amount of chapter seventy. So that was a really good year. Until the pandemic hit. And then in fiscal twenty one. We, we continued to see improvement. With the student opportunity act, but in fiscal twenty two, after the significant decline from the pandemic. We were back in hold harmless. And so we saw that for a couple of years. We saw it again last year, but in fiscal twenty five, we're anticipating growth in chapter seventy in spite of our enrollment remaining relatively flat.
And so for us as a school district. Here's a, a really a. An overview of our primary expense drivers, so first, we're always looking to try to expand our student learning options. And as, as you're aware from observations of changes in the economy, it seems like. Inflation has had an impact on just about every expense from supplies and materials and shipping. To salaries and wages as well as energy, um although the federal government. Seems to have learned through the decades that there are more effective ways to manage it. So as not to drive uh the economy into recession and so hopefully they'll continue to maintain that balance. As we had mentioned in some previous presentations that. Technology, information, data requirements have changed really dramatically over the, the last several years and we have an obligation. To continue to have our uh technology evolved and updated and as I had mentioned also in previous slides. That we're still making every effort to account for the learning loss suffered by so many students during the pandemic. In our community or in the state of the Commonwealth. About forty five percent. Of Massachusetts school age children live in families that are considered to be low income. In our community, that percentage is a, a little over sixty percent. And so that's also a primary driver because many of those students require additional supports. We also have an increased identification rate for students classified. As having uh learning disabilities or, or support needs. Um, and at the same time, uh, other local social agencies and support agencies. Are covering less of the needs uh that are required for special education students and placing a greater burden on schools to shoulder more of the support. Um, programming as well as the cost. And of course, we have aging buildings in the districts which we have to maintain to keep them safe. Um, as we had mentioned in a previous meeting. That our recent building application to MSBA was not successful, but we are planning to continue to submit our applications both in. The accelerated repair program and the core program in hopes that we can get a new roof in Gill and a new elementary school here in Montague.
Okay, so. Here we'll look at our projected expenditures compared to previous years and there's a very, you know. Overview of this. So. The instructional area, as we talked about, is a pretty significant increase and that's because our unit A contract was. Approved and so the salary adjustments are included in there. And then the student services would include our transportation increase. And food services increase, so that's also in that same range, it also includes, includes our nurses' salaries. And then the large decrease you can see down in the tuition line, the nine point five percent decrease and that is our choice and charter improvements. So we had talked a little bit about categories of expenses another time and so I pulled this together looking at. How much do we spend on salaries and stipends? Right, so that number salary stipend substitutes, how much do we pay the people and that's fifty two percent of our budget? And then the insurances are another twenty percent, so that's seventy two percent that we spend on people. We have tuitions. Which are choice charter and our special ed out of district tuitions, that's thirteen percent. So we're up to eighty five percent of our budgets that are spent out on those particular items. And then our op- operational costs, which include. Just our, keeping our buildings going and. Having copiers, our legal fees, our audits, all of that is including our operational costs, so that's another nine percent. Our transportation costs are four percent, which leaves just two percent of our budget that's spent on supplies. Professional development and other expenses, so basically our discretionary funds. Is two percent of the budget, so just under six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Uh, Joanne, uh, would textbooks fall under?
Supplies, they would be under supplies.
Under supplies, okay, thank you.
So. We've put these requests forward already, you approved these and they went to the town of Montague. Um, the Sheffield main office reconfiguration, the Hillcrest cafeteria reconfiguration to make some breakout space. And then the pavement and sidewalk repairs at Hillcrest as well. As those numbers. Come together, we will bring them back to you. If they are adjusted in any way. All right, I'm gonna stop my share here. So if anybody has any questions.
Any questions for Joanne at this point, we will be discussing it again several more times, but certainly if anything comes up. Um, even in between meetings, you certainly can ask questions of her, anything now?
Uh, I, I just, that, that was a really good presentation, I, I, oh, I, I really appreciated, uh, you know. That, that presentation, it really seemed to sum up the district's, um, uh, it's a good overview of, of, of how, of what the district does, thank you.
I appreciate the fact that over the years since I've been on committee. Um, it isn't just the numbers anymore, it presents our programming and a lot of other information that. Helps people understand why the numbers are what they are. And I, I find that really helpful. Okay, thank you so much, everyone, Joanne, Jean, Brian. Welcome. Okay, next item under business is discuss and approve composition of search committee for pupil services director. We'll need to talk about that and hopefully take a vote on that as well.
Yeah, so I have a, I have a little bit of information that I've uh attached um as a, as a recommendation as part of uh. Our district's policy and this is pretty common policy across the Commonwealth. That um there are a handful of positions that are effectively appointed by school committee. And the pupil services director is one of them and. I don't want to really get into too much of it tonight because we still have time with Joanne, but it, in addition to the, I mean, uh, with Diane Ellis. But I forwarded her letter of resignation that she'll be wrapping up on June thirtieth. Um, it's one of those things that's emotional for me, I, I've had the great fortune of. Having been a colleague of Diane's. Now headed into my seventh year after we worked a few years together in Athol, starting at two thou- in two thousand and ten. And um, I'm sad at the prospect of, of losing her from what I feel like is a very, very strong administrative team and. So we'll get into recognizing a bit more of her efforts and work as we go through the year. But um, basically what I've done is put together a summary of a search process. And as far as policy goes. The school committee has two roles within this um. Hiring process for a pupil services director. One, they can approve the um. The number and composition of the search committee to interview for the position. Um, and then obviously the school committee has to vote on the final appointment for the position. And so I've put together uh basically a recommended composition of the search committee from conversations. That we've had uh as a central office team. And I'll go through that in just a moment as a recommendation. Um, but I just wanted to give a brief overview of the search committee process. We'll post the position for a minimum of ten days. Relatively soon, we don't want to post it too soon, hire somebody and then have them accept another position before the, the fiscal year begins in July. Um, during the posting period, I'll be reaching out to assemble the search committee. The search committee will then receive an orientation to the interview process, including um the norms. Uh, ethical and legal considerations that they all need to adhere to, to be part of the team. Search committee will then review the applications and decide which candidates they wish to interview. Um, and we'll put together the questions with input from um the administrative team, from teachers, from families. And the search committee will decide on how many finalists will be put forward depending on the number of candidates interviewed as semi finalists. I will then meet with um. The other central office administrators to conduct the interviews of the finalist candidates. That are put forward by the search committee and from that we will make a selection uh to bring forward to the school committees who have an appointment approved. Does anybody have any questions about that process before I make my recommendations for the team? Okay. So my recommendation for the team. Is that um I, I would be willing to serve as the chair of the committee, but in an, in the first round, in an ex officio capacity, meaning. I would not have a say in which candidates get put forward. I would not have a say in which candidates get put forward. I would just chair the committee. But that would provide the opportunity for me to also see the candidates in the first round of interviews and I can bring some of that information. To the central office team who would then interview the finalists. My recommendation would be to have a pupil services. Department administrative assistant. One education team leader. One counselor or service provider. One school committee member if one of you is willing. One to two building administrators. One special education teacher. One general education teacher. And one parent of a special education student. I think that that gives a good representative. Pulls together a good representative team. Of a wide variety of stakeholders who each of whom have a vested interest in. The impossible task of trying to replace Diane Ellis as our pupil services director. Does anybody on the committee have any thoughts, concerns or about? That recommended composition? Or do you feel comfortable? Moving that forward as a motion? Christina?
Would you?
My one.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll quickly, my one thought was on the. The parent participant, I appreciate that you included. Having a parent representative and my concern is that as one parent. One parent might bring, you know, they're bringing a narrow perspective on their students' experience, their family's experience. I I want to keep that person there, but I I wonder about the value of having two parents. On there just because they're bringing, the other people on the committee are bringing a wider lens of across the school. So I wonder about, I think we should definitely have that perspective there. I wonder about just increasing it to two. To two parents for the sake of, and also there are so many different types of experiences that families and children and parents will bring. And so we can't have everybody on there, but I just wonder about the value of having at least two parent voices on that committee. And parents are also just so important to the. To the role.
Christina, if I could one up your recommendation and and suggest that we look at one. From the elementary level and one from the secondary level, if that makes sense. Okay.
Bill, did you have a question or comment?
Yes, I was just gonna. Wonder if you could add our community liaison. To that group and. That's not the correct title for our person, but. Gee, Ms. Langneck, I believe.
Adding one Stacy if Stacy is willing to serve.
Yes, because. To some degree, she. Is aware of the community because that's part of her station.
Any other thoughts on that composition?
So then I'd be looking for a motion.
Yeah, I wondered.
I was gonna suggest that we move to.
I think Wendy, I think Wendy has a question, comment.
Yeah. You mentioned one of the.
If you, if you could turn off your video, I think it would help.
Yeah, were you including one of the EPLs in that?
Yes.
As well?
Yes, that was the second.
Okay.
Thanks, anyone else? So the motion would be to approve the composition of the search committee as amended. Hi Diane.
Oh my God, now your volumes, even though you're unmuted, your volume is not even up.
Unless you have laryngitis, see what you can do. Now it's muted.
I've turned my volume up, is that better, everyone?
Yep.
Sorry. Much better.
I have an external mic, it's supposed to make things better. Um, so I, Brian, I may have missed you saying this, but did you mention representation of our English learner population? On the search committee?
I did not, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And so I'd like to amend the recommendation. To include the the recommended list. Adding. One Stacy. One ESL ESL support staff member. And one parent. So that there's representation of a parent of a student. On an IEP both from the elementary and secondary level.
Okay. If there's no other comments, I will entertain a motion to approve that amended composition.
I'll move it, Bill.
Bill, thank you.
I'll second it.
Second cliff, thank you. Any discussion of that before we vote? Any other thoughts? Okay, seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote to approve that composition for the search committee. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Wendy? Wendy, I'm sorry, I think you're muted. Thank you, and I think I see that Laurie Lee has joined us.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Cliff?
Yes.
Yes, and myself, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is. We have a current open Montague school committee seat. Janice Katsoulis unfortunately is not able to be a member anymore. We were very fortunate to have her join us for some time and we appreciate that. But she's not able to continue. So we're announcing that there is a new open Montague school committee seat. Please, if somebody would like to send a letter of interest to the superintendent's office by January twenty ninth. That'll give people a fair amount of time to think about it and then we can appoint someone. On the meeting the following day on the thirtieth, if that's possible. Okay, the next item we have is discussion about school committee school visits and there is a document in your packet about that. Brian, you could probably explain this a bit to us.
Sure, so I did spend some time at the, really at the request of the some members of the committee. With. The principals, one, to get a little bit of history, Sarah Burstein was helpful in that regard, Jane was also helpful. Because it's been a while since school committee has done visits to schools. And I've included an excerpt on this. This document really is entitled. Administrative preferences for organization of. Such meetings. And the excerpt has. That such. Individual school committee members interested in visiting schools or classrooms will inform the superintendent of such visits and make arrangements for visitations through the principals of various schools and so. I make a slight change to that in a request, although the policy would still stand. When I get down into general considerations, but. The principals with whom I spoke. Wanted to kind of be helpful and have the types of visits organized into categories. And so the first category would be school events which were are frequently. On the school committee agenda and in my report. And folks are always welcome to attend those and are always invited. This would include things like the unity day that occurs at the secondary level, the turkey trot that has been. Run for the last several years organized by Liz Tyler. Or awards or celebrations. Another category would be something like general facilities tours, having the opportunity to get into. The physical plant, each of the physical plants that we have and get an opportunity to. To view the physical structure and the instructional capacity and so forth of each of the buildings. And those would be set up. With in a similar manner to the way that we set up. The school committee meetings with students. In other words. I'd work with principals to identify a date and dates and times. And then. Reach out to school committee members by email or at a meeting. To say, you know, we're going to be doing a facility store of Hillcrest Elementary on this particular date. If anybody wants to join, just let me know. Classroom walkthroughs, same thing. That. I'll consult with the principals to coordinate dates and times to get into each of the buildings. And then send out an invitation to school committee members. And then the other category would be specific requests from school committee members. So for example, if a member of the committee. Might wish to have the opportunity to observe the implementation of a specific curriculum, such as social emotional learning. Being able to watch a science activity, a math activity, a group reading activity. That a member can contact me. With such a request, I'll then forward that to the principals and the principals can reach out to teachers. To see when specific activities might be scheduled and to ensure that they're, you know, they're comfortable having school committee members join their classroom. As some general considerations that came from the admin team, excuse me. That the visiting groups really should be small, especially. For viewing activities in classrooms. While students are familiar with having a small number of adults come in and out of their classroom for a variety of reasons. Larger numbers are likely to create significant distractions to instruction. We also ask the school committee members when doing instructional visits. Please do not engage in in classroom activities unless specifically invited to do so by the teacher. Knowing the teachers in our district, I can tell you it's very frequent then when I go into classrooms that I am often invited to participate. And so you should expect that that might happen, you know, if you're on an instructional round. This is the minor change from policy. In the short term, building administrators this year have really frequently been on the floor. It's very common to see an administrator covering for a teacher. And I don't want, just to protect their time and their time management. I really wanted to take and help coordinate this rather than placing it on principals just to protect their time management during these really challenging times. And then school committee members certainly may have conversations with staff who make themselves available when on tours or visits to each of the schools. And also please remember. If you're going out to schools and I'll reiterate this each time we go out, that students have broad confidentiality protections. And so does anybody have any questions or thoughts about this?
Any questions or comments about that? I know when we discussed it briefly a couple of times. We, I think some of us had thought it'd be helpful to check in with the principals to understand what works best for them and their staffs and I think this information is really helpful.
And so if the committee is is okay with this in general. And we can, we can revisit it from time to time. Our next administrative meeting is not until. I want to say the twenty-second, but we have a meeting, a school committee meeting the following evening. On the budget, but again, I would send out these invitations anyways by email. That I will begin to work with the administrative team even before that meeting. To see if there are any dates and times even upcoming that people might want to open up to invite school committee members to come into their building. And we'll continue to do so over the course of the year, this year, and as people can make it, are willing to make it, are interested in making it into the building that. We'll make sure that you're able to get a bit more access than we've had over the last three and a half years.
Thank you, we will revisit this as we go along.
Thanks, everybody.
Want to, I just want to throw in that. Pursuant to our meeting, planning this agenda. Many of the thoughts that Brian expresses. I agree with and expressed myself. And I think that the potential for. Disruption is the primary one is a large group going in during the day. It could bring up an interesting. But I'm sure a very provocative. Big brother type thing. If we wanted to. View some teaching methodology or practices, whatever, however you want to term it. Being able to do it through video. Would be a possibility, but that too would have to be. Approved, certainly accepted by any teacher that has a camera. In their classroom. Certainly wouldn't want to necessarily have permanent cameras in every classroom. But that's just something to think about. In the future, if people want to see. Pedagogical methodology, you might. Want to do that and negotiate it with the teachers.
Part of the challenge with that bill though is the the issues of confidentiality and there are. I don't know what the right term is to use. It's it's a bit more than a handful, but there are parents in the district who. Seek to protect the identity of their children and so in order to be able to share that at a public meeting, we'd need to have every child in that classroom. Have their parents give permission for the filming.
I'm not talking about a public meeting. We're talking about school committee visits. Which are not public. And the school committee should also be able to sit in a room. And view an example of what's going on.
I see, okay, thank you, thank you for that.
That's the context that I'm looking at it.
Okay.
Violating someone's personal rights.
Okay, thanks, Bill.
And that might, Bill, that's an interesting thought that might. Actually be less disruptive. To the class that's going on if a teacher felt that that was acceptable. To watch it from a distance, that way there wouldn't be people in and out of the classroom. It's an interesting thought, do what they think. Yep, thank you.
You also have to recall and discuss the fact that. In that you will be broadcasting the video. Across the internet, even though it's to a person on the school committee, the permissions would need to be. Completed as well.
Yep, exactly.
Yes, yes, unfortunately, I was recalling back in the old days when it was just a, an actual video camera on a tripod. That made a recording and it didn't go anywhere else. That's how old I am in terms of teaching. Correct, because that's when they started doing it so we could improve our practices. Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item. On the six town regional planning board meeting which was held last week, I believe.
Yep, and I'll throw in my, thank you Cliff for showing up at that meeting. Nice to have another Montague person. Present and thank you for your vote and Jane also, you were present, thank you for. Your attendance and and interest. In any event. The total report is simply that the committee. Did vote to recommend that the. Process go forward. That. A draft regional agreement be drawn up. Draft regional agreement be drawn up. And brought forward to the various towns for their approval. In all of this, if. This will be another. Long term. Effort. It won't be happening this year, this this year being through June thirtieth. It may happen in fiscal year twenty five. That would be the stronger expectation. And. If one town. Votes it down, it doesn't happen. So. The the six town regional study board, planning board. Is our name, I guess. Is a recommend is. Is a body that recommends. It's not a body that has determined a final result. Do you want to add anything as a observer or Cliff?
I have some, I just have some questions when you get done with everything.
Okay, Cliff, anything you'd like to add?
They basically said it all. At the towns move forward. And the vote was a pretty good test of how the towns are going to vote. I mean. No, but I think. Be able to provide.
Thanks. And it was, I was just there as an observer because usually I haven't been able to attend. They're usually on a Tuesday. But this was a Wednesday, so it was. I appreciated being able to go there. Jacqueline, did you have a question?
I did. So as Irving's representative. We have concerns about how if it moves forward, it will impact the tuition agreement that Irving has with. The Gil Montague School District, which will not be anymore if it moves forward. So we would like to at least open up. A dialogue moving forward, how that's going to impact the current. Tuition agreement that we have with Gil Montague. I believe in the contract, it says that if either party decide to. Change, you notify and then it's a five year waiting period. But does that mean if you dissolve? There's still five years. If not, there are just some questions. That would lend some clarity to what we would be doing moving forward. And also. It might be, if this moves forward, it might be the time, and I can't speak for the voters of Irving, but it might be the time that. Irving regionalizes with the six towns on that level in the secondary level. So much like Warwick has with their agreement. With Pioneer where they only send their students. You know, seven through twelve. So it's just. Some ideas about how it's going to affect Irving in our tuition agreement. And how much time we would have if it moved forward.
It would. It wouldn't necessarily negate the agreement with Gil Montague if Gil Montague ceases to exist. The impetus of the. And impetus in the whole project. Was to include. All of the affected towns, which includes Irving. It also. There is proposed to have some continued dialogue with. Vernon Vermont, who have been sending their kids to Pioneer for quite a long time. So in terms of regionalizing. That's not going to happen. It would. For the town of Irving, because the other towns are. A K to twelve regional, and I don't know if you can mix. A seven to twelve with a K to twelve. So that's a question for Irving to decide. Are you going to stay in your union? Thirty eight, I believe it is, or are you gonna reach or go regional for your whole? District. Another consideration, of course. Was my understanding was. Probably the. The difference in. I won't go, I won't get into that because I don't know. I'm talking about. Financial, the wealth or otherwise of the town of Irving as it might affect other towns. But that may not be a, that might be a moot point. You would know better than than I about that. But beyond that, it's certainly to engage. Irving. In a continued, in a continuation of the current agreement. But it would be with a different entity.
So the.
I just meant, does that satisfy any of your questions?
No. The agreement that the town of Irving has is with the Gil Montague School District.
Yeah.
Ceases to exist. I'm wondering about the legality of the agreement. I have a question about that. I think it needs to be explored if this moves forward. Because I'm not sure if you can just continue on as it is or if it changes.
I didn't say you would, I didn't say you would continue. I would say, I meant to say. It would have to become a new agreement. So you would be. Negotiating with a different entity.
So then that leads to what's in the current Irving Gil Montague. Tuition agreement, which is a five year grace period. I'm asking that the Gil Montague School Committee look into that for the future since. The six town regionalization study committee has made a motion to move forward. So that Irving can play catch up, right? Because we need to be able to send our children. To a school district. I think that you are incorrect about the regionalization aspect because. Shrewsbury and Leverett send their children to Amherst Regionalization. And if they get a vote, right? So they are regionalized. At the seven through twelve level with Amherst Pelham. Although it's Union twenty eight is their elementary. School district. So. All I'm saying is that I'm. Bringing up these concerns now because it looks like it's going to move forward. So. To protect and notify what's going, you know, the Irving portion of it, I'm asking to explore that possibility. I'm not asking for answers right away, but I'm asking that we look into it further. That's all.
I'm sure it would be and. Joanne, I saw you, but just let me answer. That Irving has had a representative previous to yourself. On that committee, you're not on it. You're on this committee. I'm, I get mixed up.
No, and I, and I have talked to the Irving School Committee about this. And the representative was the former school committee, Jennifer O'Korn, and. I believe the other one was Caitlin Maylu Little, but. I report back to the Irving School Committee, so I'm asking these questions to be able to give. A report back to them about the possibility of exploring it. So. Really was more of a. We have the situation. How is it going to affect Irving so that I can bring it before, back to the school committee so that they can make an informed decision? That's all.
Thank, thank you. That's, that's an important point. Joanne, did I see you have your hand up?
Yes, I think. We need to pull the Irving tuition agreement and bring it to the school committee next week so we can review that. And I can just answer your question about some different. Ways that places are regionalized. So in Amherst Pelham. The regional district is just seven through twelve. Each elementary, they're their own district, which means they have their own school committee like Irving does and like each of the ones in the union. But there are split districts. Mohawk, for instance, is a split district. So some towns are only members seven through twelve. Some towns are members K through twelve. It needed legislation to become a district in that way. So there's a lot of different ways to look at it, but I think. It hasn't been discussed having Irving be a part of. The new region in those conversations, has it, Bill? Would just be tuition.
So far, it's been just tuition, but the question has always been put out there. Should other towns be included in this whole process and Irving would certainly be one of them.
Right. Right now is a tuition in. At the secondary level and they're their own elementary. So they're just like Irving right now for Pioneer.
And to that end, they've been talking about. For formulating a tuition agreement rather than. Joining as a full member of a regional.
I think that's a good suggestion, Joanne, though. Perhaps we should look at the Irving agreement and and. Keep those things in mind, and that's good information for the six town regional planning board to consider, certainly.
I think we should also get a legal advisory on that. Like posed as. Jacqueline. Posed the question simply because we don't want to have. That agreement that we have in place. Then. All this, let's say all the towns go through and they all approve this, but it's effectively not legal because there's something in the Irving agreement that. Prevents us from doing it. On the timeline that may come out of. An approval. So it would seem to make sense to at least consult with our attorney.
And that's really where I was going for Brian was I wanted not to lose sight of the fact that we have a tuition agreement. With the Gil Montague School District, which in a sense would be dissolved. And also we would need to plan for the future because any future agreement that we have with the new entity would be different than what we have currently.
Yep. So that makes sense.
Yep, and probably. I think consulting lawyers, but also Chris Lynch at the at the state level. Is the person who has been in charge of any regional agreements or any changes. I expect she has a lot of knowledge about how and how not and and what it implies, any of those. That those might be really helpful to us looking at this, but thank you for bringing that up.
Yes, thank you, Jackie. I appreciate your thoughts.
Okay, thank you. Last item under business, discussion about in person versus remote school committee meetings. This time we posted the meeting with the either or choice, and as it turned out. The or was necessary and I'm listening to it outside my window and glad I'm not out in it. So that really is is something that's important with the winter coming on to be able to do that. As well as the consideration of people who aren't able to be here or might be ill enough that they wouldn't want to be in person. Jackie?
I don't know if you're aware or not, but I also am the Franklin County Tech School Representative. So we always hold a hybrid meeting. So that those that can't, usually somebody from the Hill towns or whatever, if the weather is bad, can't make it. They can still participate in the meeting as. A school committee member, and I didn't know if you were considering the all or nothing. Option, or if there was a way to do it. Such as Franklin County Tech School does, where it could be a hybrid for those that wanted to go in person could, and those who. Couldn't make it for whatever the reason, still participate remotely.
There have been some challenges. We've done just one hybrid meeting that was with the town and there. There have been tons of technological challenges. So we opted for the either or with the intent of posting it in person. And having the legal contingency and then following through if it changes from being in person. That we then have to post that on. On the premises where it would have physically been held with the link and so forth. So. We've, we've shied away from the hybrid version. Of the meetings and tried to do either or.
Okay, thanks. So I think we will probably continue trying. To allow for whatever seems to work, although we did. The January twenty third meeting is not a full school committee meeting in the usual sense. It's a working meeting where we just go through the line item budget. So while it's posted as a public meeting. It has not ever been broadcast in that. That I remember, and that's fourteen years. So I expect we'll do the same on the twenty third that we have, that it will not be. There won't be anything else to the meeting except for examining the budget, the line item budget by the entire committee. Going through that. And I think with that in mind, I believe. The idea was to have it a remote. Meeting because there really wouldn't be public participation anyway. People would be available, be able to. See it, I believe, but it also wouldn't be broadcast. That's pretty much been what the working meeting meant.
And one of the, one of the. I'm sorry, one of the other things we had discussed was that that might provide us an opportunity to experiment with Google Meet. Given that we don't have the other obligations.
Yes, we thought perhaps Google meets might not involve the issues we've been having most recently with our broadcasts. Early on, Google was much clearer and there were not. These issues with sound that we've been developing lately. And we are thinking if we can try Google for that remote meeting, see if we can avoid those issues. We may just. Transfer when it is remote to Google meets. That's an option that we're looking at, wanting it to.
I have a counter opinion. I think of all the meetings of the year, the next working session is the one that I feel is most important to have in person. In person is the best format for. Asking questions, collaborating, any sort of dialogue that's happening. It's really challenging on a group call. To have, hear everybody's voices. Some people are more comfortable than others just naturally on a group call. This is the most, one of the most important things that we do and really understanding the budget is challenging. So I think it's really important that we actually meet in person if possible. And not deal with. Sound delays or try a new technology like Google Meet for the first time at one of our more, more challenging and important. Sessions. So I move, I would, I don't mean to use the technical term move. I just propose that we. Actually really prioritize meeting in person, obviously, whether with, you know. Is a separate issue, but I'd really like to have that meeting in person. And then meetings like we just had today, I feel less strongly about. It's less collaborative and. You know, I can see everybody's face nicely. So anyways. Yeah, I have that opinion. Not sure if that's strongly held by others, but.
Anyone else?
Jane, did you freeze?
No, I'm thinking. It's hard to think. I'm thinking slower at this hour of the evening. I mean, it's, we, we could do it. We, I expect if we did, we would have to. Post it as we did tonight in case the weather or something else got in the way. You know, if we do, I, it's still just a working meeting, so it's not going to involve other parts of the meeting or public participation or any of those. Parts of a regular meeting so that we can just focus on the budget. The line item budget. That's what the working meeting is defined as. Okay. Bill, did I see your hand? No?
No, I'm just scratching my face.
Okay, sorry. Didn't want to interrupt. All right, thank you. We don't have any minutes to approve this evening. I tend to request. Certainly can, you can make them. We will be doing the agenda. A week before the January thirtieth meeting. Since that's our next regular one, the agenda is already set for the twenty third. It is line item budget. Work. So I'm thinking that's it for this evening. In that case, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. And Laurie Lee seconded. Any discussion of that? I think we're good. I'll take a roll call vote to be done. Bill?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Christina?
Yes.
Wendy? Wendy? Wendy, I'm sorry, I didn't. I think you were muted when you spoke. Okay, yeah, thank you. Laurie Lee?
Yes.
And Cliff? And myself, yes. Thank you and good evening.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. How are you doing, Tina?
It's starting to wear out.
You keeping it up?
I'm keeping it up as much as I can.
What did you do? You went to San Francisco? What did you do?